How long do we go? You know, it's kind of the same for the mayor. Intrusive.
That's it then, Joe?
Yep. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm John Gray. I'm the mayor of the town of Seabrook Island. We're convening this afternoon on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, for the town council meeting for the month of July twenty twenty one. I call the meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, certified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The uh court will please confirm that notice of this meeting has been duly posted and that the other requirements of the Freedom of Information Act have been set.
Yes, we have met all rules and regulations for the Freedom of Information Act.
Thanks for that. The first items of business on our agenda are approval of minutes of previous meetings and first among those we have the town council public hearing minutes from June twenty second, twenty twenty one. You should have copies of the minutes as presented. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the public hearing of June twenty second, twenty twenty one?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the town council public hearing of June twenty second, twenty twenty one, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And we, that was unanimous. The minutes of the public hearing of June twenty second, twenty twenty one are approved. Next up, we have the minutes from the town council meeting of June twenty second, twenty one, twenty one. Easy for me to say. I would say that all members have been provided copies of these minutes as well, and I ask for a motion for approval of those minutes as presented.
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, question, or discussion concerning the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the meeting of town council of June twenty second, twenty twenty one as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes of the town council meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty one are approved. Next up, we have the town council special call meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty one?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the special call meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty one? Hearing none. I ask that all in favor of approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty one, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, I agree, that was unanimous. The minutes of the meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty one are approved as presented. Lastly, we have the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion of the minutes of Ways and Means meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty one? Hearing nothing. I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the Ways and Means meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty one as presented. Please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes as well have been approved unanimously. Next up on the agenda, we'll have a review of the financials for the month of June twenty twenty one. I will give that review. The total fund balance for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one was six million, one hundred seven thousand, eight hundred sixty five dollars, about seven hundred seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty four dollars more than the balance as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty, and about one million, two hundred twenty two thousand, seventeen dollars more than for the same period of twenty nineteen. Unrestricted revenue for June totaled three hundred twenty seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars, and unrestricted revenue for the year totaled nine hundred forty two thousand, eight hundred sixty seven dollars, representing about seventy one percent of the twenty twenty one annual budget, and being about two hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred twenty dollars more than for the same period in twenty twenty. Expenditures for June totaled ninety six thousand, seven hundred fifty one dollars, and expenditures for the year totaled four hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred sixty two dollars, representing about thirty percent of the twenty twenty one annual budget. Expenditures for the year were about three thousand, seven hundred eighty two dollars more compared to the same period of twenty twenty. Excess of revenues or expenditures was two hundred thirty one thousand, sixty eight dollars for the month of June, and excess of revenues over expenditures for the year was five hundred twenty five thousand, five hundred five dollars compared to an excess of revenues over expenditures of about two hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, reflecting the significantly greater revenue in the period this year as compared to the same period in twenty twenty. Are there any questions concerning the finances? Thank you for not asking questions. Uh, the next item on the agenda uh will be under citizens' comments, and we will have a video conference presentation of the results of the audit of the town's finances for fiscal year twenty twenty. Presentation will be made by Mr. David Irwin of the town's the town's audit services provider, Malden and Jenkins. I invite Mr. Irwin to make that presentation.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I hope you all are doing well. Again, my name is David Irwin, and I'm with Malden Jenkins. Uh, I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the town's financial statements, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to uh to be here to discuss with you the results of this year's audit. Uh, I had a presentation I was gonna put up, uh, and I tried to share my screen, and it's saying that uh the host has disabled the screen sharing. Um, I'm not sure if that can be easily fixed. If not, I can just go ahead and present without the presentation. That's fine as well, whatever you all prefer.
Just trying to make in your co-host. Are you able to share now?
I think so. Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Well, I believe you all have already received a copy of the financial statement, so the purpose of today's presentation is just to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors report, uh, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the compliance report that we issue in conjunction with the audit, discuss some of the information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all, and answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves, they are the responsibility of town's management and members of the council. Uh, our responsibility, as your independent auditors, is to express an opinion on these statements. Uh, we conducted our audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Uh, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide as your external auditor. What this, what this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, there is a compliance report that we also issue. It's called the Yellow Book Report. Um, this document is a report on the town's internal controls and your compliance with laws and regulations, and um I'm happy to say that uh we do not have any audit findings to report to you all this year, uh, meaning we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses um in the town's internal control during our audit. So, you know, with all the new accounting standards that are, that are being implemented each year, and really just how complex a financial statement reporting process has become, um, it's nice to be able to present to a council and tell them that we're issuing a clean opinion uh with no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So, um, again, congratulations to you all on that. That's something you all should definitely proud of. You know, as you all know, uh, you know, these continue to be some unique and unusual times, um, but yeah, I'm happy to say that from an audit standpoint, this year was business as usual. Um, you know, Joe and Fay, they, they once again uh did a great job of having everything ready for us. They were very accommodating to our audit team, and they worked hard to address all our questions and get us everything that we needed uh in order to get the audit finalized on time. So, again, a special thank you to them. It's my understanding that Fay has since retired. Uh, congratulations to Fay on that, but uh we have been in communication with Catherine, and uh we, we look forward to working with her in future years. Now, to give you a brief overview of the financial statements, you know, as you look at your financial statements, one section that I always like to point out is uh is called the management's discussion analysis, otherwise it is the NDNA. Um, it's right after our audit opinion on page four of your financial statements. Um, if you all can, I would strongly encourage you to read that section of the document. You know, the purpose of the NDNA um i- is to make it easier for a broader audience to better understand your financial statements um based on a, on an explanation, a narrative explanation from the perspective of management. So, you know, again, this section, it does a really good job of summarizing the financial statements, and uh it provides the reader with an analytical overview of the financial activity that occurred throughout the year. In addition, this section has a lot of comparative information, meaning uh the financial activity for fiscal years twenty and nineteen are disclosed, and uh, you know, to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It gives you much better understanding of the current year activity um when you have the prior year activity right there for comparative purposes. So, again, when you look through your financial statements, if you would, I would strongly encourage you to take the time to read through the NDNA. Now, the town's basic financial statements, they are broken up into three components, uh, the first of which is your government-wide statements. Now, this section of your report provides a broad view of the town's operations in a manner similar to what you would see to private sector business. You all have two funds. Under this section, both of the town's funds are combined under one section called the governmental activities column, and there is also a separate column in this section for the utility commission, which is a discreetly presenting component unit of the town. This slide summarizes the town's financial activity from the government-wide perspective. You know, as you can see here, uh, the town ended the year with total assets and deferred outflows of resources around seven point four million, um, around one point six million of that are your capital assets net of accumulated appreciation. You also had total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources around seven hundred thousand dollars, um, which resulted in ending net position uh of approximately six point seven million dollars for the year. That's an increase around four hundred twenty three thousand dollars uh for, for the year, which again is, is right in line with the increase that you all had in two thousand nineteen. So, um, in, in looking at your income statement, you all had revenues around one point seven million and expenses around one point three billion, which again uh results in that four hundred thousand dollar increase in net position. So, uh, you know, from an entity-wide perspective, a, a really good year for you all. Uh, the town has a strong balance sheet and it really is in good shape financially. Um, you know, again, looking at your balance sheets, you all have around five point four million dollars in cash and cash equivalents. Um, you only have around sixty six thousand dollars in current liabilities, and the only long-term liability you have is the six hundred thousand dollar net pension liability um that was required to be put on the books five or six years ago when Gatsby sixty eight was upended. So, um, again, you are in great shape uh financially, and um, you know, needless to say, this is a, this is a financial position that uh that most governments would love to be in. So, uh, hats off to you all on that. The second component of your financial statements are the fund level statements. Uh, you, in, in the day-to-day operations of the town, uh, the, the focus is more so on the individual funds themselves. So, the fund level is what you typically see throughout the year. Now, again, this, this component focuses on the individual parts of the government, and uh they report the town's operations in more detail than that of the government-wide statements. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you all have two funds, and the primary interest you all is a general fund. It's the main fund of the town, uh, and therefore it accounts for the majority of the revenues received and funds expended. So, we have a chart on this slide that, that breaks down the general revenues, uh, general funds revenues for the year. Total revenues of the general fund were approximately one point five million dollars. That's around a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's, that's around a hundred thousand dollar decrease compared to two thousand nineteen. Now, that decrease is really, um, most of that's just a reduction of your grant revenue compared to two thousand nineteen, which again, grant revenue fluctuates from year to year, uh, depending on the various activities you all have going on. So, you know, again, you all are, are very unique in the fact that you do not levy property taxes. So, uh, you know, which is obviously a significant source of, of revenue for most governments, but you know, for you all, business licenses, uh, local option sales tax, and your franchise fees are your, are your, are your key revenue drivers there. So, um, as you can see on this chart, your business licenses were around seven hundred twelve thousand dollars for the year, while local option sales tax uh was around three hundred four thousand, and your franchise fees uh was right at two hundred twenty six thousand for the year. Uh, total expenditures of the general fund were just over a million dollars, um, which is a decrease around two hundred twenty nine thousand. So, while your revenues decreased by a hundred thousand, um, your, your expenditures decreased by two hundred twenty nine thousand. So, uh, that, that's always good to see there. And in total, your, your general fund's fund balance um increased by approximately four hundred forty five thousand dollars during the year for an ending balance of five point four million. So, again, um, uh, overall, a, another great year for your general fund. And it, as I mentioned earlier, you know, this, this is a general fund that, uh, that, that most governments would love to have. Um, you know, your general fund incurred monthly expenditures on average uh of approximately eighty four thousand dollars a month. So, you all ended two thousand twenty with the fund balance equal to over five years of operating expenditures. So, uh, that's really good to see. That is a very strong fund balance, and uh, you know, from the financial crisis of ten plus years ago to the, to the global pandemic we're dealing with today, and, and really just the unique uh issues that sometimes arise w- with a coastal community such as yourself. Um, you know, if I'm in your shoes, it's, it's awfully comforting to, to, to know that the town is really in a, in a strong financial position to be able to withstand such events as they occur. So, um, again, congratulations to you all on that. The other fund that you all have uh is a special revenue fund. Now, this is a fund, uh, it includes your state and county accommodation tax, and uh it's restricted for various uh promotional tourism and capital-related projects. Uh, for the, for the sake of time, I won't go into that in detail, but uh that fund is in great shape financially as well. And again, the, the third and final component of your town's financial statements are your footnotes. Um, the footnotes, they disclose the town's op- accounting methods, and it's, uh, they provide an expanded um explanation of your operational activity and your financial results. So, um, again, there really weren't any significant changes to your footnotes this year. So, unless anybody has any questions, um, I, I won't go into that in detail. This final slide, uh, just some items that, uh, that we're required to disclose to you all by the accounting standards. Uh, you know, again, with you all receiving a clean opinion and no audit findings, the information on this slide is, is merely formality, but um, again, we had no difficulties or disagreements in dealing with management. We had no uncorrected misstatements, and we are independent of the town um as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, um, you know, unless anybody has any specific questions, uh, that concludes my presentation. But again, what I've tried to do was just hit the highlights, what I think is the most important to you all. Uh, but if there's anything that I didn't touch on that you all have any questions about, please don't hesitate to ask. But um, again, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and, uh, and look forward to working in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Uh, do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Irwin? I've seen uh no questions. Uh, no, no volunteers with questions, Mr. Irwin. Thank you for your presentation, and of course, you're welcome to stay on uh for the uh town's uh council meeting if you wish to do so. Otherwise, uh, you may prefer to resume something more useful for you.
Well, I, I, I would, but I actually have another meeting to go to shortly. So, uh, thank you again for everybody, and y'all take care.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, the next, uh, well, actually, I guess it's part of this portion of the agenda where I will inquire as to any citizens' comments that were received in advance of the meeting. Anyone, well, actually, I will look to the town court first. Do you have citizens' comments received before the meeting?
No, sir. I did not.
Joe, do you?
Uh, no, I haven't received.
Thank you for that. Okay, back with the agenda. Uh, next, we will have reports of the standing committees, commissions, and boards, and first among those, I'll call on Councilwoman Fox to give the report for public relations and communications.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a short report. Uh, this is the communications between seven eleven, seven twenty seven, which is today. Um, we had a successful radio net practice on Sunday, July eighteenth at eight P M, and there were eight Seabrook Island ham radio operators in attendance. And timelines, we had, I think, about four or five items. We had TOSI clips from the Ways and Means Committee. We had our farewell to Fay. I believe that was earlier this week. Um, we had a post announcing the board of zoning appeals meeting, which will take place on seven thirty, and we had a notice of today's meeting. Um, the only other topic that I'd like to bring up, and this is probably something I should bring up between um Joe and I, and um when we sent out the notifications for the last hurricane tropical storm, Elsa, I had, my email is attached to those, and I had several people contact me indicating that those communications were pending up in their spam or junk mail folder. And that is part of Red Alert, if I'm correct in that, when we send out those notifications, those um email alerts that go out.
Well, actually, Pat, those emails are issued by the town's bulk mail facility, which uh is, it's not part of Code Red. It's an independent facility. So, the bulk mail may be treated by anyone's mail
Okay.
as spam because it's being issued to something over three thousand email addresses. So, a, a common reaction of an email service is when an email comes in with a large number of addresses, it gets dumped into a spam folder.
So, in essence, there's nothing we can really do about that.
No, there, really, I think that people can uh set, if they find that they have received an email from the town from its bulk email service in their spam, they can check that to mark it as not spam.
That's correct, and that would be my response to these people.
And I, I can't say that I know for sure that once you've done that, subsequent emails will be treated as not spam. I think it would at least hold true for as long as you're in the same session on your device.
Uh, I, since I haven't had to deal with Jerry's emails, yes, I know that you can try and, or go in there and do that. So, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something happening on our side.
No, we, we use a facility from MailChimp.
Okay.
And uh, as I said, because it was, we're issuing emails to over three thousand email addresses, it's gonna get, it can't get kicked into a spam folder by the recipient's emailers.
And um if people had heard about other folks getting these emails, and they want to get on the list, what is the best way for them to get on the list?
Well, in the past, uh, I would rely on SPOA's uh list of email addresses, and that, of course, resulted in having a number of people indicate that they don't want to get our emails. So, it's a manual, a justice
Okay.
of the list that we maintain. However, this year, when I asked for SPOA's email address list, the response came back with a list of three hundred addresses. So, I, I didn't adopt that list because my experience was, we had far, far more email addresses that we would have received from SPOA in the past, and I didn't want to truncate from over three thousand down to three hundred or under four hundred, actually.
So, we don't know whether those three hundred are just new people or not.
Yeah, when I inquired of SPOA, I didn't get a very I'll call it, an answer that I really understood. So, the best I can do at this point is encourage people to notify the town if they don't see that they're getting the emails from our bulk mail service to inform the town that they want to be added to our list.
Okay. I, I know I've been into MailChimp, and I have been able to add people to it. So, if someone were to contact me directly, I can just have them to mention, or I can have them contact the town. Thank you for those.
Yep. Anything further, Pat?
Uh, no, that is it.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from that? Next up, we will have the report for the Public Safety Committee and Special Projects, and I'll call on Councilman Goldstein to give that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll start with the Public Safety Committee. We had a meeting of July twelfth. At that meeting, we reviewed the previous minutes and approved them. We looked at the C E P updates, outstanding items. There were two items that we, we considered incomplete. Um, one of these was trying to determine if there was a need for a uh, a list of qualified personnel on the island that could help during an emergency. Uh, the committee decided before we proceeded with that, that, that we would talk to uh CERT and see if they were interested in getting that information. Uh, the committee's thought was that the town probably was not the right entity to be in charge of that list. So, I have talked to, uh, Steve Paul at the CERT, but I haven't talked to the Public Safety Committee, so I'll report back on that discussion next time. Uh, we discussed our, at that time, upcoming D R C exercise. Now, it's in the past. We had that D R C exercise last Friday. Um, we also discussed, um, or at least brought up that the inbound walking path was going to likely remain, and that the committee may want to look at any signage or something that maybe if we leave that bike path in there, what we should do with that signage there. And the town administrator brought up that there was a debris monitoring services contract that was uh going to be up for renewal, and we had proposals out, and we set a special meeting for uh the twenty seventh, which is today at ten A M. I can report from that meeting that the Public Safety Committee members uh and Mr. Pronan reviewed the two proposals, one from Loston Services, our existing provider, and one from Tetra Tech. Um, the scoring was very close, and it was the committee's unanimous decision that Tetra Tech would be in the best interest of the town. Any specifics, you're welcome to ask. Joe can probably answer if you have questions about their proposals. Um, that will be the end of the Public Safety Committee. As for special projects, uh, nothing in particular, though I did want to, and I did, did talk to Joe about this. It appears the two projects that will impact Seabrook Island Road, the Assistive Living and M U S C seem to be moving along. Uh, Joe says that he believes the Assistive Living is close to getting started, and I do believe that M U S C for somehow presented up something to kind of feel up, but it looked like that's moving along. My suggestion to Joe was that when we actually get confirmation these things are moving, it would be in the best interest of the town to get all parties into a quick discussion about the road because I believe the Assistive Living will be repaving a good portion of the piece in front of theirs, and M U S A will likely have to do some road work there, and we'd like to get them all on the same page uh what we anticipate doing so that we can do this as efficiently as possible and get everybody and get everybody working together. I believe that is all I have.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think we need to take a vote on the Tetra Tech, because that contract's coming up. The existing one will be expiring in the next few weeks. So if council's comfortable, if we can take a vote to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Tetra Tech to enter into a contract for uncalled debris monitoring services.
Can we have a motion to, or council, to approve entry into a contract with Tetra Tech for debris monitoring services and to authorize the mayor to execute that contract?
Some would.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the proposal from Tetra Tech and the motion for entry into a contract with Tetra Tech?
Just to clarify, this is an uncalled contract. So the only time we would pay anything is if we had to activate the contract for post-disaster situation. For anybody who's not familiar with what this contract is, we have a separate contract with Phillips and Jordan. We'll actually do the clearing and hallway of debris following a disaster event. The purpose of having a company like Tetra Tech or the other one, Rostand Solutions, is that they basically do all of the monitoring of the clearing and hallway activities for the purpose of submitting that for FEMA reimbursement. They basically act as like an independent monitor on behalf of the town, separate from the company that's actually doing the cleanup and hallway. And they provide everything in a manner that meets all of the FEMA reimbursement requirements. So in the event, we hope we don't have to activate the contract, but we do activate the contract, they would essentially be working on our behalf to assist us with the FEMA reimbursement process.
Thank you, Joe. We had a representative from Phillips and Jordan here. It was in the last two weeks, Tommy Webster, and he mentioned or commented to the effect that Phillips and Jordan has worked with both Rostand Solutions and Tetra Tech. And he considered either to be a good working partner for this purpose. So as Joe said, the debris monitor essentially relies on, in the case of Rostand, I think it's also true of Tetra Tech. They have proprietary software that they use to assemble information that they gather from the field and then put it together in a form that makes it suitable for submission for FEMA reimbursement. And I can assure you that in the event of a storm of the magnitude that we would engage the services of Phillips and Jordan to do the cleanup, we would certainly be interested in getting FEMA reimbursement. So, and Wade in myself, I now will ask for approval by members of council of the motion to approve entry into the contract and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. All in favor, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And next up, we have Councilwoman Finkie for Beach Administration and Community and Government Relations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report. I had a few things that I'd like to discuss, but they're going to come up later in your issues in the Beach Patrol report, so I'll just save my comments till we get there.
Okay, Jerry, without a report, I can't invite people to ask you questions on what you didn't mention.
Excuse me, I do have a question.
Oh.
Did you get Lauren's email?
Yeah, at 2:11.
Fine.
So I kind of thought we needed to talk about that with Joe. I don't know if we can just bring it up now, that she wants $750, but...
Yeah, I just thought there was a time, time issue on it, and I thought if we don't do it today, that may force her hand. She raised her email that she has to use the funds.
Well, their fiscal year is going to be September 1st, so we could still do it in August.
And it was $750, so I didn't know if that was something we could, you could bring up.
I mean, I can go ahead and bring it up. Lauren Russ with Low Country Marine Mammal Network that runs our dolphin program. She has talked over the last several months about additional signage on the beach. And again, at 2:11, she sent Barry and I this email that some funding has freed up with NOAA to help pay for these signs. But she's $750 short with the NOAA funding, is that how you read that, Barry?
Yeah.
And with the town being willing to make up the difference. And she showed us the size and the wording of the signs, which could be modified. I think that we need to look at it. I don't think we can just bring it up today and say, oh, let's spend it. But I think we get great feedback from that program. I mean, people love seeing the strand feeding, and they like the information from the volunteers. So we've been very supportive, and I think what we can say to her is, we'll bring it up in August. I understand NOAA having to spend their money, but the fiscal year for them is September 1st, so...
As long as we can tell we have enough time to
Yeah, I think we have enough time.
And she can then get the money.
Yeah, I don't think that we can pull up these pictures and suggested wording and everything and do it so quickly. But we will expedite her request so that we're ready to act on it.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Councilman Goldstein. Next up, we have the update for the Ways and Means Committee items. I'm giving that update, first of all, concerning the Development Standards Ordinance revision. In the course of discussion of public dissemination of the revised Development Standards Ordinance, Councilwoman Fox agreed to work with the town administrator for preparation of posts to tidelines concerning public engagement in review of the revised DSO. In regard to public comment, it was noted that in the event comments warrant further revision of the ordinance, it would be possible to reconvene the DSO Advisory Committee to consider such further revisions. Otherwise, no further meetings of that committee, that is, the DSO Advisory Committee, are currently contemplated. The next item I have is hiring of the zoning administrator stroke code enforcement. I have it here as officer. I think you were designating him as a manager or supervisor.
Him or her.
Yes.
Chief code enforcement officer.
Okay, all right, chief code enforcement, all right. Zoning administrator stroke chief code enforcement officer. In response to inquiry of Councilwoman Finkie, the town administrator confirmed that postings of the town's open position of zoning administrator stroke chief code enforcement officer had been made and responses had been received. Joe, you may have further on that in your portion of the agenda. The next item I have concerns the inbound path repaving. Again, the inquiry from Councilwoman Finkie and the town administrator confirmed that the contractor selected to perform the payment repairs and repaving, that was Superior Laptop, I believe, of the inbound path would honor the quoted price of its bid, notwithstanding apparent expiration of the bid. Next up, we have another inquiry from Councilwoman Finkie. And the town administrator commented that revision of the town's business license regulation would require substantive adoption of a model ordinance published by Municipal Association of South Carolina, together with conversion of business license classifications from the town's current reliance on the so-called standard industrial classification, also referred to as SIC, to the North American Industry Classification System, referred to as NAICS. Town administrator knew that some work had been undertaken in support of that conversion. And the final inquiry from Councilwoman Finkie had to do with short-term rental regulation. And the town administrator reported that staff has received a few complaints and has issued a citation for a violation of the occupancy regulation. Otherwise, he noted that there had been a relatively low number of instances of violations for short-term rentals without the required permit or required business license. And with that, I have concluded my updates from the Ways and Means Committee meeting. And the next item on the agenda would be the Planning Commission, for which we have no report, Board of Zoning Appeals, for which we have no report. And then next up on the agenda will be reports of ad hoc committees. And for that, we have no report. So now we come to the reports of the town officers, and I will give my report as mayor. So the first of these are items not included in the Ways and Means Committee updates. And the first of those are beach incidents. Remind members that prior to the last council meeting, that's the June council meeting, the town had received a resident comment forwarding a photo reporting to show a shark caught by a shore fishing from North Beach. Since then, the town has received additional comments from residents expressing concern about fishing from the beach. Members have been provided copies of relevant emails concerning unrelated incidents, together with a copy of the relevant section of the town code. I shared that information out so that you would have an opportunity to weigh up, I would say, both the extent of the concerns that are expressed and the current regulation under the town's code. And I now invite members to comment as to their support for further consideration of the existing town regulation with the goal of pursuing regulation to address resident concerns. And what I'm going to do is, as I'm asking for comments, I'm going to do this by polling members of council. I will ask you, Councilwoman Finkie, to comment first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a place where, like I said, I have comments to say later in my report. A couple of weeks ago at the Ways and Means meeting, I raised the issue of Beach Patrol being maybe a little more aggressive with citations and not letting things ride. And I think that the complaint about fishing kind of falls under that. I look at our ordinance, and I think it's pretty clear that council with that ordinance puts safety first, that if fishing poses any type of safety issue to swimmers, especially young children along the beach, that Beach Patrol should tell the fishermen to move elsewhere and stop fishing. So I guess my feeling is this goes back to council sending a strong signal to our Beach Patrol contractor that we want them to enforce that, that when there are complaints about children in the water and fishing poles, that they ask the fishermen to stop fishing and to move elsewhere. And I would say especially between Boardwalk 1 and Boardwalk 7, where people are on the beach, they've got their umbrellas and tents set up, and they're spending the day with the kids, that we really ask Beach Patrol during the peak season to enforce our ordinance and ask those fishermen to move on. I'm not, I don't, I personally don't think we should say to people, you can't fish from our beach. Some beaches do that. I talked to council a couple of months ago that I was kind of looking up and down the coast at the different beach ordinances of our sister coastal communities. Turned into a lot bigger job than I thought, with all the nuances between them and what we can and can't do under state law. So if we did want to change this, I would say like, down the road in a month or two, when the season's over, we can maybe really look at our beach ordinance of how to improve it. We might talk about this, but right now, I just see it as we need Beach Patrol to enforce what we have on the books. And with that, I will yield.
Councilwoman Finkie yields, remainder of her time. We don't have to have time, so... Thank you, Councilwoman Fox.
I love going after Jerry. I agree completely. I actually did experience a fisherman with two young children. They were older than my grandsons, and they kind of plopped them right there where everyone was swimming and then left them. So, and they had some supervision with another fisherman down the way. But it seems to me that if that was a concern of mine, I should have, you know, I could have gone to Beach Patrol and said something, and I would have hoped that they would have enforced the safety issue. So I'm not, I agree with Jerry. I don't want to stop fishing on our beaches. I think it's a wonderful thing for people to be able to do. I just think we need to enforce the fact that they need to be cognizant of where they're fishing and whether or not there's swimmers nearby. And we tend to go to Boardwalk 1 and go where there's no pets allowed. So they can certainly walk another 100 yards or 200 yards down the beach and be away from swimmers. So it seems to me that it's just common sense, I would think, and maybe just enforce the laws, as we already have them on the books.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Councilman Goldstein.
I agree with what's been said. I think there is a little more to the issue. I have, I go to the beach quite often. In the morning, some of the problems are the fishermen tend to put their poles out, back up 20 yards from the shoreline. And it couldn't be two days ago, I saw a biker on a musket TC rotated by a fisherman. They can't see the line, they're riding along there, and the fishermen don't care. They're just waiting for, you know, sitting there. So I do think the town needs to look at restricting fishing in certain areas. I think it's not right to put the burden on swimmers and bathers to go, hey, we need to find Beach Patrol, because Beach Patrol's around, they could be 45 minutes away. I do think, like, just like dogs on the beach, just like anything else, we can kind of put the fishermen north of Boardwalk 1 a couple hundred yards, where most people don't go, and they have a good mile of area they can go fish there and leave from Boardwalk 1 to Boardwalk 7 a no-fishing zone. And if we want to think about, well, but it's really only a three-month problem, we can kind of do what we do with the dog, which is, you know, after September 30th and before April 30th are the times that the fishing's restricted in Boardwalk 1 to Boardwalk 7. And other times, you can fish anywhere along the beach. But I do think, I mean, I've seen plenty of fishermen go out there, plop themselves down, kids, families are all by them, and they just sit themselves down and start fishing with no regard for the people around them. And I don't think it's the job of the parents to go flag Beach Patrol down, ask them to move, then we're putting Beach Patrol in a position of what's safe, what's not safe. I think if the town feels that we should push the fishermen into a certain area, I don't think it's unreasonable to give them a full mile north of Boardwalk 1 to come and just go fish there. I mean, they're not going to bother the birds.
So Barry, if we were tweaking our ordinance, you would like to limit fishing to certain areas of the beach?
Yeah, north of Boardwalk 1, basically 100 yards or so. And I've even let them fish, you know, that ordinance would, or that restriction will be applied from, say, you know, May 1st to September 30th or something. After that, they can fish anywhere they want, because there's not a lot of people on the beach in the middle of the water.
Yeah, I think that if, you know, if it happened as laid out in that email, I was concerned that, I mean, I don't think that parents should have to flag down Beach Patrol. I think Beach Patrol is patrolling the beach, should see the fishermen and say, there's too many people on the beach, there's too many swimmers, you need to move. So I guess I was approaching it that way of, I don't think it was, it's parents' responsibility to do that when we have Beach Patrol out there for safety reasons. I think they should be proactive in making sure that fishermen are
I agree, but I think the three months in the summer that we're very busy, the beach is predominantly used by beachgoers, swimmers, bicyclists, pedestrians, and there's just a few fishermen, but one fisherman can upset quite a few people. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the fishermen to go north of Boardwalk 100 yards and start there. And you're giving them over a mile of beach and go all the way to the inlet and fish anywhere along there. So I don't think that's unreasonable to So I don't think that's unreasonable to ask them to limit their activities during those three months.
So since I'm kind of like working on this to make a presentation to council, I mean, is it fair to think though that we finish out the season and then?
Yeah, I don't think, and actually, code enforcement officers have been at the beach much earlier. I've seen them there at 6:15, 6:20, 6 o'clock. So code enforcement officers have been running around. But again, two days ago or three days ago, the bicycle almost got decapitated. I saw the gentleman put his fishing rods out. I looked at it and thought, uh-oh, he backed up 30 yards. The next thing I know, husband and wife were riding their bicycles right along there. And luckily, the guy just about caught himself before he hit the line. Can't blame the code enforcement officer. He was way down where he should have been down by the dolphins trying to get all those people watching the sunrise. So if it's just, if we simplify it next year and make it that you can't fish but north of Boardwalk One, it won't solve the bicycle people's problems. I mean, but at least limit them to a certain area.
Should the fishermen have to remain with their fishing pools so that?
He was, he was sitting there. He was sitting there. He didn't really do anything wrong. He was sitting there with his lines out. He put two lines out. He was sitting in his chair. It was 6:30 in the morning. He wasn't looking. The bicycles weren't looking. But I've seen many bicycles and walkers almost get strangled by the fishing lines.
Thank you, Barry. Since we're, I'll say, you seem to be headed in the direction of encouraging Beach Patrol to take a more assertive posture with respect to enforcement of the existing regulation. Joe, what do you see as any, say, benefit and/or limitation on having Beach Patrol respond to that request?
I mean, the benefit, I think, is public safety. That's the reason why we have the ordinance. The issue we may run into, and this came up when the ordinance was adopted, you know, at least with what we have on the books right now. There will likely be incidents where you have the individuals who are fishing there before the individuals come and swim and use that section of the beach. And I think if we're going to ask for active patrolling and enforcement, I mean, we should be on the record saying, you know, the priority is on individuals using the beach and not the fishing. So if we expect Beach Patrol to ask those individuals to move, even if they were there first, then, you know, when I sent Rob from Beach Patrol an email after we got a couple of messages a week or week and a half ago, you know, he wanted to make sure that that was the town's intent, that even if they're there first, the town's message is that the swimmers and users of the beach take priority. So I think, you know, as long as everyone's in agreement with that approach and we're consistent with that approach, you know, we need to put that messaging out. But the expectation is if there's swimmers or other people around, no matter who was there first, you know, you can be asked to leave. And if you are asked to leave, and you don't, you could be cited under the ordinance.
Yeah, well, that's consistent with my reading of the ordinance. It's not, there's no limitation or proviso that fishermen is their first, it can't be asked to move. It's entirely a question of the discretion of the code enforcement officer to make a determination that the fishing poses a risk to the other people in the water or on the beach, however you want to put it. So I certainly agree that that is what our ordinance calls for. I don't think this is really a matter of interpretation. I think it's just the way the ordinance is written. And I would also say that I think it would be beneficial, Councilwoman Fox, if you would work with Jerry and our town administrator to gen up a piece or timelines, it'd be my first choice, obviously, to make it clear that people who are fishing from the beach are responsible for doing so in a safe manner in accordance with the provisions of the town's ordinance that regulates that activity. And as far as revising the ordinance, I think that Councilwoman Finkie's comments are well taken. What we really need to do is, I think it's important that we publicize where we are, make sure that the the community has the benefit of whatever we can put together to push this out since we are seeing some complaints. And then let's see if that helps to reduce the number of incidents. I agree that someone who's fishing can easily pick up and move. I don't think it's particularly burdensome for them to do that, but I'm not a fisherman, so I I'm not familiar with how much gear people go out to the beach with so that they can fish. So I think it's just the way the ordinance is written. It's up to them to do so on a safe manner. And with that, Joe, I think we'll try and get something pushed out as you had recommended.
Well, pushing out, and I think we also need to probably have a sit-down with Beach Patrol just to go through some of the outstanding items, just to make sure everyone's, you know, speaking the same language.
Because from that woman's report, it sounded like Beach Patrol wasn't aware, whoever she talked to, they weren't aware of saying, I can go ask them to move. It seemed like whoever she talked to from her side of the story was, he just brushed her off and said he has a right to fish there. So I think when you say a sit-down with Beach Patrol, that kind of is a good segue for me anyway into the incident with the e-bikes on the beach and that Beach Patrol really wasn't on top of that. They weren't paying attention or they were just being too lax with it. So maybe in the sit-down about fishing, we could talk about being more proactive on some of these other issues, too.
All right. The next item I'm going to touch on is the proposed monitoring of short-boat activity on the Bow Bank. I received an inquiry from Dana Beach of the Coastal Conservation League concerning proposed enhanced monitoring of short-boat activity on the Bow Bank. It's apparently the intention to install a camera on the Bow Bank and place a radio transmitter nearby to facilitate remote monitoring of the short-boat activity there. Members have been provided a copy of the email relevant to this inquiry. I have shared that correspondence with representatives of Supola, the club, and Supervillain Burger Group. I have informed Mr. Beach that the town is not involved in South Carolina Department of Natural Resources management of the Bow Bank to the extent that installation of a radio transmitter within the town would require a rection or modification of the tower or antenna. The town's regulations under the Development Standards Ordinance would apply. There was a suggestion that the radio transmitters, whatever they had in mind, would be up by the club. I had a comment from Doris Reimark to the effect that they had looked at doing this some time ago and that there's no easy way, I guess, to get an antenna on the roof of the island house. So I I don't know what may be required in order to have a radio transmitter for the purposes of of this enhanced monitoring. Although Mr. Beach has had offered to meet with representatives of the town and the other potentially affected organizations, no meeting has been scheduled to date. Next, I want to touch on the Supola test of remote site for issuing guest passes. Recent informal discussions of officials of the town, Supola, and the club representatives of the Supola acknowledged the town's cooperation with their undertaking on the so-called beta test of use of the location of a former NV Realty business as a site for remote issuance of guest passes. There are signs up along Seabrook Island Road. Of course, I'm not trying to get a guest pass, so I just kind of noticed that there are signs there. There are new markings at the curb cut for Seabrook Island Road from that location. And I think that really the bottom line is this test is to gauge the effectiveness of a remote site to reduce traffic backups on Seabrook Island Road. And at this point, of course, it's a test in progress, so no conclusion can be drawn in that regard. A special committee for consideration of use of the town's green belt allocation. Members are reminded of the town's opportunity to designate projects for use of the town's allocation of the Charleston County Green Belt Program. The discussion has been held with a representative of the Low Country Land Trust of potential projects on John's Island for participation by the town. At this stage or at this time, we have not identified a project that's far enough along for the town to designate use of its allocation for the Green Belt Program that's being shepherded by the Low Country Land Trust. Councilwoman Finkie has advocated for an effort to identify potential projects within the confines of the town. In a recent informal discussion with representatives of the town, Supola, and the club, creation of a special committee by the town to seek to identify suitable projects with the town was encouraged. With that in mind, I am today proposing establishment of a special committee to engage representatives from Supola, the town, and others within the community to define suitable projects within the town for designation of the town's allocation of green belt funding. We had, in those discussions, I know we've made at least a reference to the green space, but that is not necessarily the focus. Certainly, we had an enthusiastic response from Supola that they would like to have a representative on the special committee. I am not today naming members to a committee, but I will say that Councilwoman Finkie has voiced her willingness to serve. So you can expect that once we have a few other names to get a committee off the ground, Councilwoman Finkie will be prominently included in the special committee because she volunteered. And we could have other residents and representatives of other organizations that the town may be asked to serve. So I see this as the committee, as a committee that would continue to function so long as there is an opportunity for the town to designate use of funds out of the county's green belt program. Right now, the balance for the town for its allocation is something over $130,000. It's not a size that would allow us to make acquisitions of real property within the town, so far as I'm concerned. But there there could be projects that our special committee can identify. It would fit within the size of our allocation. So all of that being said, I will invite our members to comment with reference to the proposed committee. Jerry, anything to say?
No, I just think it's kind of an exciting project for council to work on and for the town to look at how we could keep those green belt monies local. And I think with MUSC coming in and a new owner at Bow Hicket, it's not necessarily identifying a project. We may have to actually come up with a proposal and a project, like a linear park over the Bow Hicket or making a more of a park atmosphere up our outbound path. So there's lots of options. Some of the money we could do for easements, maybe MUSC would like contribute an easement across their property for something. So it's kind of one of those, I always say this, I hate the word brainstorming, but I'd love this committee to kind of have some experts in the area and brainstorm what we could do with this money to keep it here at Seabrook. Last time we gave $70,000 to a very worthwhile project to to protect Angel Oak, but I thought it'd be nicer if we could keep it down here, this end of John's Island.
Yeah, I think maybe, I'm not sure about this, Jerry. I think the town kicked in a total of like $70,000 for Angel Oak. I could be wrong.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
But in any case, you know, our contribution wouldn't have been enough to buy any more property for Angel Oak, but by pooling contributions from us and others, it turned out that they were able to secure, I don't know if they got an easement, I can't remember if they had a conservation easement or they actually acquired a title outright. But the point is, Angel Oak was already an existing entity for purposes of being able to meet the requirements of the county's ordinance for these funds. So it was an easy step for the town to use its allocation for that purpose. Pat, any comments?
Other than I support Jerry on this issue, we discussed it and I think it's a great idea that we bring in a group from Seabrook Island and discuss some ideas.
See what we can come up with. Okay, Barry, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, you're not, just so you understand, you're not, you don't have to recuse yourself because of your relationship with green space. It's okay.
No, I think I'm going to bring this up to green space because I think some of the green space should be on it.
Very differently.
All right. Thank you, Barry. And with that, I have exhausted my items. So returning to the agenda, I will now, looks like we can now have the report of the town administrator stroke zoning administrator.
All right. First item under my report is a Beach Patrol update. We have data through week 14, which covers us through July 10th of 2021. So far this year, starting with code enforcement, there were 267 warnings which have been issued. Compared to last year, that's down by 28% through week 14 at 374 warnings. A lot of that has to do with last year with the special requirements due to COVID, the large groups and things of that nature. So those have gone down some this year. We've had one citation issued so far, that was actually the first week of the Beach Patrol season. That has since been adjudicated and fine has been paid. Zero calls to the sheriff. For leash law violations observed so far this year, 155. Last year, that number was 193. So they are down about 20% year over year. We hope that means more people are abiding by the requirements that have been adopted. And but that number is down fairly significantly year over year. As far as where the violations have been observed so far this year, 11% in the critical habitat area. That's that area north of Boardwalk One, the no-dog area, and 89% in the general beach area. Compared to last year, the percentage that had taken place in the critical habitat was almost double last year. Last year, we were at 6%, like you said, right now we're at 11%. So if we are looking possibly at beefing up, you know, being more assertive on the beach, if we are seeing an increase in that proportion being in the critical area, that may be an area that we want to have some additional discretion. As far as other observed violations, 27 dune violations as individuals carry up into the dunes. That is down 37% year over year. The glass on the beach, 70. That one's also down 45% year over year. But the number of unauthorized vehicles on the beach at five is a that's not broken down by what the bicycles or other types of vehicles, but we have that five so far this year. One beach vessel. As far as some of the other services that they provide, by and large, in line with last year, three first aid services. They have not issued any fishing orders to date, but when we have that discussion, I would expect that number to change for the latter half of the season. Haven't had any rescues yet this year. Let's hope that stays that way. Rescue watercraft has one. Number of stings is actually down by about two thirds so far. I don't know if that just means we're going to see a little bit later. Usually peaks mid to late July, August into September. So we might just see a little bit of a lag on that. Last year at this time, we had 10. So far this year, we've only had three. Primarily jellyfish, but we also do have stings. Swimuses, zero. Otuses, zero. Other, we have 11. Other can be anything from really a missing child with their family. Even last year, we had almost three times as many of the other categories. Most of those were And then so far this year, 35 individual periods where they went out and provided trash service on the beach. We did add one additional trash can. Last year we had four. We didn't put one additional out this year, so we're up to five. When the four went back out for whatever reason, one was not put in the north beach area, north of Boardwalk Number One. So we do have the ability to add up to under our contract. So we put in the fifth one. At some point, we may go and add a sixth this round, but that is anticipated under our contract. So that's where we stand as of right now. So this does get us through the you know, that peak of the peak, which is the Fourth of July week, which you see as the week 14 on there. So usually what we see is, you know, typically the bell shaped curve. So we're this data is kind of right at the top of the bell. So we see a ramp up June and July, and then we get into July, August, there's nothing to start, at least historically, start to go back down a little bit as we move closer into fall and schools returning and the the end of our tourism season. So we would expect those trends to continue into this year. Any questions about anything on the beach patrol report? Here none. Quick update on the short term rental ordinance. We have now issued more than 500 short term rental permits so far for the 2021 calendar year. Just because we've issued 500 doesn't necessarily mean that there's 500 units that are actively being rented. Some of those have transferred, so we may have issued one rental permit to the previous owner earlier in the year. And now there's a new owner who's obtained a new permit. So we've had we have say in the 15 to 20 range that have transferred at some point so far during the year. We have sent out the first round of violation notices. Those are to owners who were advertising short term rentals without having required rental permit and a business license. We sent out 20 of those. We've gotten the a large majority of those back and now properly permitted. We had some where the the address of record, when we send it to the tax record, they're no longer at that address. So we've had to try to do some additional digging and track them down. So we've gotten a few more of those out and back in. And then we had one we're still trying to figure out. It was a I won't go into the details of the case, but it was a former husband and wife in Somerville who are still the owners of record. They are no longer with us, but so we're trying to find out who the next of kin is so we can provide notification on that. At this point, we don't know who's renting it, but it's showing up on the rental rental sites. So we're still working on that one. I expect either late this week or early next week, any of those that have not obtained licenses and permits, we will be sending out citations for those. We're pretty much at or right around the 10 day period. So we get them from the time they receive it. We do send them certified mail, so we know when they're delivered to the individuals. So from the time they receive it, we give them 10 days in which to obtain their license and permit. At this point, the ones that we've sent the letters to through Airbnb, through VRBO, whatever source, you can see if they've actually had rentals in 2021. So the ones that we've sent to have had confirmed, reviewed rentals. So if one of them gets the notice and they just take their listing down, that's fine. But if you don't get a license because you've rented so far this year, he will still receive a citation. So like I said, we'll be starting those in the next, next few days. We have gotten, I would say, a handful complaints. We haven't got a ton of them. Primarily issues related to parking. We had one or two allegations of occupancy and excess of what was permitted. One of our code enforcement officers did issue the first citation a couple of weeks ago, which is still pending. It will be going to court at our next court date. Most of what we've had have been parking or equipment. So if they're parking in a yard, they're storing equipment on property, both of which are not permitted at rental units. I am happy to say each time we get one, we pull it up, we find out who the owner management company is and I believe all the ones we've had so far have been with management companies. They've been very responsive. You know, we'll send them a picture or information about the complaint. They get right on it. And you know, when we send those out, we'll say, you know, we're giving you the courtesy notice to contact the renters, make sure they understand the rules, you know, get the vehicles off the yard or whatever. And they've all been very responsive. So we thank them for their assistance with that. Any questions about short term?
I have a question, Joe. When Pat and I were working on this, part of our research was that communities that put occupancy limits in place and required them to be advertised, that really helped because people then saw that, oh, this unit sleeps eight. I can't bring 20 people. And so they would look for different units. So they really saw some passive controls or passive help because they had to advertise that occupancy limits. So right now, we're tracking who has permits and who has their business license. Are we at all tracking that they're accurately advertising the occupancy limits?
We have all the data. That's our next step in our enforcement approach. Obviously, we're still in the process of trying to hire and bring on board the new additional code enforcement staff. But we have had our existing code enforcement officers going around. You know, the one that the citation was issued for, they actually contacted the gate and determined that the first contacted the management company, who said that there were more people staying there than what was allowed. And then they called back and said, well, no, it's actually the the permitted number, but then they also have an infant, which does not count against that number. The code enforcement office officer contacted the gate and found that they had called in more passes to the gate than they are permitted to have at that property. So that was one where the code enforcement officer did issue a citation. You know, whether or not it holds up in court, we'll wait and see, but you know, we'll have that information that we present to the judge. But that's really going to be our next step. Our first focus was trying to get everyone in and licensed. We do have the ability and the data where we can cross reference to see how many they're advertising and whether that's higher than what we have as our maximum permitted amount for each property. So that'll be our next group of if we do identify any violations, that'll be our next step that we set out for advertising occupancy in advance. In excess of what's permitted under the ordinance.
I think that'll really be key because you can, I know we have one complaint where it said it slept, you know, occupancy was 14, but then when you read the description, it was like sleeps up to 15 or 16. So some of that's just inadvertent, I'm sure that didn't get corrected. But I think when we start enforcing that advertisement, like I said, communities that have done that, they really saw that kind of passive control of not overcrowding and maybe respond to some of the community concerns that have surfaced this summer.
And we've had people question, how do you enforce occupancy? You know, we said from the very beginning, it's probably one of, if not the most difficult things to enforce because we're not sending somebody out at 2:00 in the morning to knock on the door and count how many people are, you know, sleeping in a particular unit. So you know, typically, you know, you get the majority of your impact through enforcing it on the advertising. Because if you have 12 people, you're not going to rent a property that's being advertised that says they can only sleep six or eight or something.
Yeah, especially when they know that and the rental agencies and stuff know that that's now our ordinance. So that's why I said it's a good passive. When they see that upfront, they just don't rent it. So you don't get that overcrowding. So yeah, I look forward to that kind of being our next phase of.
But the others, I mean, are really between, you know, patrol and complaints. You know, we've had one where there were a lot of vehicles and somebody complained about, well, it turns out it wasn't even a rental. You know, we were able to pull up the records, found this property isn't being advertised. It's likely the owner with their, you know, family or whoever. You know, the way our ordinance is worded, if they're parked on their yard, they're technically not violating the town ordinance. It's a rental property and they're parked in the yard than they are. So you know, between patrols and, you know, the complaints, that's also, you know, we'll be open about that. People are the eyes and ears. If they see something that looks suspicious and they let us know, we'll send somebody out to look into it. Then, you know, we've had a few, if they observe something, they'll send us a picture. I don't even have to send somebody out to them. I can just forward a picture to the management company and, you know, get it addressed, you know, almost instantly. So that's, that's been the help for us as well.
Thank you.
There were no other questions about that. Quick update on the DSO, the Development Standards Worthits update. We have scheduled a date for our, calling it the DSO Open House Meeting, and we will do that here in person at Town Hall. We'll be bringing in our consultant, Paul Blomk, PLD Planning Group, who's kind of worked with the DSO Advisory Committee to, you know, revamp and rewrite the DSO ordinance. So August 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00 PM is when we'll have the the meeting. It'll start kind of with more of a structured component where people can come in. Paul will be here with a brief presentation. It'll be going through kind of what's changed, why it's changed, what we were trying to accomplish, what some of the previous issues were. And then just kind of have like an open Q and A session. And then once we break out with that, you know, staff will be here, consultant will be here. We're hoping a couple of the committee members may come as well. I can meet with folks one on one if they want to see, you know, how it may impact their property. You know, we do now have a draft zoning map, which will have hopefully blown up, printed out here. Because that's really going to be some of the biggest changes around the zoning districts as we transition to the new DSO. And I will say, not to steal Paul's thunder when he's doing his presentation, you know, most of the changes in the ordinance are trying to be more reflective of what's actually on the ground today. So trying to tailor our districts, Barry and I were talking about multifamily district earlier. Right now, we have one district that covers everything from, you know, single family homes in the village to, you know, the detached structures like Summerwind or Sea Loft and then some of the townhomes like Salt Marsh and, you know, Long Bend, but then also the true multifamily like Pelican Watch and Atrium. You know, we're, we have one set of regulations that we're applying to all these different types of development. And probably the biggest change in the ordinance is breaking those out and having more tailored districts. So you know, not just having one multifamily, but having a townhome district. So the ones that sit on an individual lot, they might still be attached, but they're connected floor to ceiling by wall. They sit on an individual lot. Those will become a townhome district and we would have a separate set of setbacks and requirements for those. We would have a true multifamily district, which is primarily the condos like, like Salt Marsh Pelican Watch and Atrium and some of the ones up at Bow Hicket Marina, you know, where they're actual true multifamily stacking residential units. But then also having a new district, a cluster residential district where we could put the sea lofts and the tree lofts and the summer winds and some of those. So you know, it looks like it's more substantial of a change than it is. But when you kind of get down into the reasoning why some of those changes were made, it's moving away from the one size fits all with, you know, here's the requirements, regardless of what type of multifamily you are, and going into something that's a little bit more tailored. So you know, when you do have somebody who wants to modify or rebuild or something like that, you know, you can kind of tailor those requirements more to that particular type of development and set up your standards that way. So it should be a big benefit for the town. But, you know, we do want to make sure just because of how much is changing, that people are aware of what's going on, why the things are changing, that we're recommending to change. And, you know, this is really the first step in that process is this public open house type meeting where people can come and learn more, ask questions, see how it may impact them personally, if at all. And what we'll do is we'll try at least two weeks prior to that meeting to have the draft ordinance on the website. The draft zoning map on the website. We'll set up a special page for that. And if people have questions or comments, they either can't come to the meeting, don't want to come to the meeting, have a conflict or whatever, they can still submit questions or comments through the website as well. So probably in the next week to 10 days or so, we should have that available on the website. Any questions about DSO? Couple other quick items, just for information. The, another question was raised earlier about the status of the zoning administrator and chief code chief code enforcement officer position. That position is currently advertised in multiple locations. You've gotten probably maybe 15 or so applications so far. We're going to be doing our first review and hopefully selecting some candidates for review either Friday this week or Monday next week. So we'll try to get that started in the next few days. Just as an FYI, our, the question was actually raised at the Public Safety Committee meeting today when we were talking about the debris monitoring contract, what the status was and the expiration date for our debris removal contract with Phillips of Jordan. And that triggered me to go and pull up the contract and I realized, hey, this thing is going to be expired on September 1st. It's a three year contract of two one year renewals. So we do have to go in the next couple of weeks and exercise first of two one year renewals, just to continue that on. So I appreciate that honor. For bringing that up because otherwise I probably would have missed it. But we'll, we'll make sure that we get that extended in the next couple of weeks. But we'll, we'll make sure that we get that extended in the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, this is the first of what I'm going to call our hybrid public meetings. So obviously, it's great to see all of you here collectively and personally again for the first time, I think, since like April last year, give or take. So we are now back to having meetings here at Town Hall. Our policy remains, if you are not fully vaccinated and you come to a meeting, whether you are a member, a staff member, or an attendee, if you're not fully vaccinated, we ask that you please continue to wear a mask, especially as we're seeing this Delta variant now starting to go crazy all across the country. So if you haven't been vaccinated, one, please be vaccinated. But two, if you're not, please continue to wear a mask if you come to a public meeting for your own safety and for the safety of those around you. We are going to continue to livestream our meetings on YouTube, which we're doing right now. Everybody who's watching probably noticed this little camera thing moving around. We do have a new tool here that will allow us to continue broadcasting our meetings. And then we will have them set up as Zoom meetings. So if a council member is unable to attend or a board or a commission or committee member is unable to attend, they still can log you and participate via Zoom, either, you know, through a smart device or iPad or a computer, even by phone. Same thing with members of the public. If they want to participate by Zoom, if they want to, you know, comment on a public hearing or something like that, you do not have to physically come to the meeting. We will continue to allow you to dial in on Zoom and participate that way as well. And we do have several individuals here on our Zoom meetings still. And we'll continue, if you don't want to participate in the meeting, but you just want to watch the meeting, we are continuing to broadcast all of them livestream on YouTube as well. So that may be something we want to stick in the timelines blur. I think our last virtual meeting will be Friday with the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's on because we had to advertise the date, time, and location thirty days in advance. And we advertised that as a virtual meeting. So that should be, hopefully going forward, our last virtual meeting. And we'll continue to do that here at Town Hall. We do have an accommodations tax advisory committee meeting, which will be here on Friday. We have public safety here this morning. Of course, the council meeting this afternoon. So just wanted to, you know, that was a priority for council, that we continue to leave those options available for anyone who can't attend or doesn't feel safe attending, to still either watch or participate in our meeting. So if there is anyone watching either on Zoom or YouTube, you know, this is really the first council meeting. We're trying our new streaming device. So hopefully you can hear us. I know when David Irwin or Otter was speaking, I thought that was really loud, really clear. It worked well. So, but for anyone who's watching us, if you can't hear us either live or if you're watching later via YouTube, just shoot us a message because, you know, we're still kind of tweaking. And, you know, we want to make sure that these meetings are accessible as possible. So if you can't see, if you can't hear, let us know and we'll continue to make whatever tweaks we need to make to ensure continued access to our council board and commission meetings. With that, that concludes our call.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Oh, Councilor Lethy has a question.
Surprise, surprise. Just two quick things to follow up on, some things we talked about a couple weeks ago, ways and means. Status of sign replacement repair, painting, and the PGA cut on Seabrook Island.
I'll do the second one first. I had sent you a copy of the email when they said it was going to be removed. I think that was last week or the week before. I'm not sure what happened to it. I've been out of town for the last ten days. But I'll follow up with them to get a status report. They are obligated to remove it and restore it to its pre-existing condition. So we'll, we'll follow up with that. Signs, we had been in contact with a local company who's done a lot of sign work out here on Seabrook Island, including for the PGA, I think so for the town in the past as well. I said it before I left town. I have not done a response yet, but I'll follow up with them as well and see if we can get that working forward. I know we did lose a sign. I think one of our code enforcement officers said someone had hit the one that was out there. Rather than hit a sign on the pedestrian, but we, we do have the new signs right here sitting in the lobby. So we'll at the very least get one out temporarily until the replacement signs are up.
Imagine you're running into the problem that everybody is trying to get work done at your house and contractors out there. Everybody's just so busy, but.
Yeah, I know there's definitely a labor shortage, which is being felt all across the economy. When I was up in Maine last week, I mean, there were entire businesses that just didn't open for the season because they couldn't find people to work. And I know we've seen that here. They've seen it in Kiowa and restaurants and hotels and other places all across, not only in the state, but the country. So we, we hope that that will resolve itself. But, I mean, yeah, a lot of contractors are up to their eyeballs right now. So it's our hope that we can have those done as soon as we can. It might take a little bit longer depending on their staffing issues and turnover.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. So next on the agenda, reports of council members. And interestingly enough, Councilman Fox, do you have any further report?
No, I have no further reports.
Thank you. I would have been surprised if you did. Next up, we have the report from the Utility Commission. And I will call on Commission Chair Annie Smith Jones to give that report.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our meeting on July twenty-first. We had it up here at Town Council so that we were both on Zoom as well as commissioners who could be in attendance or in attendance. In regard to our June financials, we remain within normal variation of the budget for the year. Our net income for the month of June was a surplus of forty-six thousand two hundred seventeen dollars. Capital charges for the month of June were seventy-two thousand four hundred and one. After adjusting for the bond notes, principal payments, and capital, June showed a deficit of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. Our year-to-date reflects an operating income of four hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. After our capital expenditures and debt service principal, our year-to-date there's a deficit of seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Our available cash as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one is two million five hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. In regard to our operations, on our water side, we have an effluent. Our effluent quality continues to meet all primitive requirements during the month. The daily average flow was point four hundred forty-nine million gallons per day. Our maximum daily flow was point five hundred and fifty-four million gallons for the month. Our total effluent and deep water pumped to Seabrook Island Golf Course for irrigation was five point six hundred twenty-one million gallons of effluent and fourteen point six hundred seventeen million gallons from our deep well. The total effluent in deep water well pumped to Oak Point Golf Course was nine point nine million gallons of effluent and one point two million gallons from the deep well. Our water distribution, we delivered thirty-two million nine hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty-two gallons of water for the month compared to twenty-seven million gallons from last year. Just a couple of other little odds and ends. We had our water quality report has been completed. We've posted that up on our webpage for our clients to be able to see. In regard to the water quality report, additionally, it will go out in the June billing. And it was posted up on Tideline, so at least the notice was posted up on Tideline. That report, as well as the postings, were submitted to DEHEC and were approved. The other couple little oddities of business, we continue with our FEMA generators. If you remember, we purchased through three generators in conjunction with FEMA. They are currently being installed. We are a little bit slower than what we had hoped, given that we're waiting for materials, et cetera, as well as labor issues, I think, with our contractor. But we are quite hopeful that they will be up and running before we might have a hurricane. At least that's our hope. Additionally, we're, right now, we're vamping our developers' agreements. We've got a, the developer for the piece of property that is behind Freshfields in Dell. I know they call two in Dells, but I can't remember which in Dell. But anyway, that particular property, they're asking for an agreement to service them. We have to service them in accordance with our contract. That contract was from October nineteen ninety. It was a contract we inherited. So we do not have a choice on that particular one. But we are in the process, we're vamping our developers' agreement specifically because of that. Of that has come up at this particular point. And then the last major piece of business, we received our bids in regard to the holding pond expansion project. Those bids came in significantly more expensive than what we anticipated. We anticipated them coming in. Our engineer that developed, did the study for us, put them closer to two point nine. As you know, I came in with the board bond ordinance request to not exceed three point five. The bids came in, the lowest bid came in at just about five million. Yeah. So needless to say, after much thought and discussion amongst the commissioners in regard to this particular project, we have decided not to move forward at this time. We will continue to sort of watch, but we're thinking that in another year to possibly two years, that some of the costing that would endure of that particular bid, that some of the costs will come down. And that hopefully we will be able to complete it at some point in the future. Meanwhile, we are exploring what other alternatives there may or may not possibly be. And we'll just continue to monitor our situation. Our crucial months are in November, December, January, no, December, January, and February, when we continue to receive the amount of effluent that comes. And yet, the golf course doesn't, particular golf courses don't particularly want to or need to have the level of irrigation that, you know, moves the water for us. However, our contract with Seabrook Island, the club is, they're obligated to take up to, I believe it's one point one billion gallons per day regardless. So.
So Annie, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I am. Our next meeting is scheduled for August the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Now I'm complete. Go ahead. You have questions.
Did you say that you are pushing out the expansion project a year or two years? Or did you not specify?
I specified that the commissioners have voted to table it and that we will, we will probably table it for a year to two years. It's sort of dependent upon, you know, the situation. We do have a lot of development potential coming in. Some that we have no, we're obligated to serve. There is the piece of property over here that unless the town decides to annex the property, we are not under obligation to serve it. But we do have development. It is a project that eventually we definitely are going to have to do. Whether we do it exactly as we had hoped to do it by raising the dikes or solving it in some other fashion. The developers' agreements, for example, the one that we're doing here, it, it doesn't help with, it doesn't directly help with the issue, but somewhat does. The developers' agreements are such that whatever amount we take in, they have to take that much back from us in effluent. However, we still have to have a holding pond to be able to put it to before we can give it over to, you know, whatever other locations it's going to be going to. So we, we, we will need to solve this problem in the future because we will be running out of space.
Well, I understood that you had a commitment for, when I refer to this, the Hollow Creek Development Company property is the Endell tract.
Okay.
And I understood that you had a commitment for sewer and service for that.
That is correct.
That property is like somewhere north of three hundred acres. And it seems to be that we'd scoped at one time four units per acre or so. Whatever that works out to in, in your units, I'm talking about residential units. It would have been twelve hundred residential units potentially for development. I'm not aware, I have not been advised of, I have not been whispered to of any currently pending plans for development of that track. It's just a thing. In my view, you have a commitment and you can't ignore it.
That, that is correct. They are requesting a, I forget the formal term, but it's the commitment letter that they need to have in order to prove that they've got sewer such that they can develop the property. They are in the process, from what I understand, at the beginning points of developing that property. How far there, I have no idea. I've not seen any plans whatsoever. It's the initial request for the commitment letter from us at this time.
Is that the one that's a capability?
It's got another term.
Is there, so what extent of these improvements would be done to serve that property? Like if you took that property out, do you still have to do?
Yes. I've got too many other pieces of property. And just, just look at the amount of increase that we're seeing usage of water, for example, just on, in Seabrook Island. I, you know, we've had, I forget what I just reported to you, but it was a significant increase over last year. And if you think of it in terms of, we delivered thirty-two million versus twenty-seven million from last year. So you've got that much in one month. from last year, so you've gotten that much in one month increase. Well, that water's got to go somewhere. You know, I mean, we're not drinking it all. We're flushing our toilets and showering and doing varieties of things. Eventually, there's no question, we will need to do this project.
I know you said you have a commitment, you made the utility commission, have a commitment to serve. What commitment does the property owner or future developer have to pay for whatever infrastructure you need to install to serve their project?
They will have to pay, you know, they'll have to pay the fees that we give them for development. We just raised those fees. I can't tell you exactly how much we wasted, but we just raised it. They will have a contribution certainly by the fees that they have to pay in regard to that particular project.
So just to make sure I'm not mistaken, are they asking for you to say you have the ability to serve X number, but they're not going to contribute anything until they start paying for individual taps?
No, they pay a developer's fee and then they pay a tapage fee. It's a way, I guess you could look at it that particular way.
Because I know in Form 8, we didn't reserve capacity for anyone until they paid upfront, whatever their tax performance.
Right. But they probably, they probably weren't under contract, legal contract to service that. Maybe they were, I don't know. I mean, this is not a developer who is just coming to us or coming to the town. There's a, the legal obligation that we inherited and hence the town inherited when Heder sold the utility to the town.
I understand that there is an obligation to serve, but I've never seen one where there's an obligation to have the capacity available without the developer basically fronting the cost of installing that.
They have, they will pay for all the installations, et cetera, related to their property for development. They have to have that.
That's not anticipated for this project. You're pushing out for a year or two, that would be a separate expansion?
That, I'm not sure I understand Jay's question. They will have to pay for all of their piping, et cetera, in order to run sewage to go from their property into, coming into our service. In addition, they will have fees that they'll have to pay besides their own cost of the piping, et cetera. They will additionally have to pay fees to be able to start. And then when they have residential units, assuming residential or commercial units, they will then also be charged, obviously, their cost for that too.
So they'll pay everything to get it from their development to the utility system?
Correct.
They'll pay for upgrades to the utility system and they'll pay tax fees?
Correct, they'll pay, yeah. I believe that's correct. They'll hold me one hundred percent, I think that's correct.
The reason why I was asking the question is, you know, if there's something that they could be looking at on the rise. If this improvement has to be done before they can start anything, there may be value to say, you know, hey, if you're willing to prepay whatever and try to close that gap to allow you to move forward with the project and essentially reserve some capacity.
The original contract from October nineteen ninety had a provision in it that allowed for us to, us being Seabrook Island Utility, to purchase six acres of land that is alongside our current holding pond. That was not done at the time. However, I have requested our attorneys to put into our developers' agreement with the current developer that in order to move forward, I want to see that six acres available again. The price tag from nineteen ninety, according to our contract, is a thousand dollars an acre. I would like to see that, I am pushing right now to see that, since it runs alongside of our holding pond, to see if we can manage to pick up that. And that may be an alternative to the current issue that we have. Additionally, our contract with Seabrook Island Club has, within that contract, the provision of expansion through the pond system that Seabrook Island has, similar to what we're doing right now. We've hesitated in that. That's very, that's difficult, that particular one. And so, I don't know, I think we need to step back. The commission needs to step back, given what's happened, and evaluate and see what in fact do we have alternatives? If we don't have alternatives, and obviously, we do need to go forward at some point with this particular project because we must have more space for our holding pond, for our effluent, you know. So, that's. I think, you know, a lot of the contractors, you know, they felt as though they were busy enough and they didn't necessarily need to be. So.
Thank you, Annie. Any other questions for Annie?
Surprise, surprise, we have a couple. So, do you think you'll review it like every six months about putting up the bid? Do you think you'll wait a whole year?
Oh, no, we won't, we won't go putting it up.
So you don't wait like a whole year?
I think we'll wait at least a full year and sort of try to evaluate what does the economy, you know, what seems to be happening? To put out the bid again, that whole process, even though we've got a set package, having developed it at this point, it still takes, it takes some money to go ahead and do that and so forth. So we won't, we won't go and we bid it. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna need at least a year probably for some of the market to come back down again or at least stabilize and sort of see where we are with this.
So, in relation to this property, we're talking about the sewer side of it and the holding ponds and everything. So, the water part, the water main, Charleston County water, well, that will.
That's two different things.
I know it's two different things. So, we've been talking about the sewer side, so I'm thinking if they develop this and the water side, does there need to be another tower? Will that impact our water pressure?
We won't, no, because we're not going to service them with water.
Oh.
We only will service them with sewer. They'll tap in directly to St. John's Water.
And so will that, I mean, their tap is going to be before it gets to Seabrook. So will that impact us on water pressure or anything?
Doesn't work that way.
No.
Doesn't work that way?
Doesn't work.
Okay. Because they always talk about in the Johns Island Task Force about how many taps are coming off Johns Island water. It's increasing so much. So, and I don't want this to sound like a silly question, but in your report, you talk about the water delivered from the deep well. Is that the nearly three thousand foot well that was originally drilled on Seabrook for water?
I believe it was the original. You do not drink from that well, none of your homes are serviced utilizing that well. We use it strictly for irrigation.
I knew that that original well, the water quality was bad and tasted terrible.
No, it's okay. It's, DEHEC would allow, if we needed to on an emergency kind of basis. It is, it is drinkable. Yeah, it's not going to taste nearly as nice as what you're currently getting.
But you could if we had.
Yeah, if we had.
Yeah. But you think it was that, you do think it was that original well that they drilled?
I do think it's the original well that they drilled.
Okay. All right, thank you, I was just curious.
There you go.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
Has the project gone all the way through, do you have permitting?
I don't have, I did not have permits yet in hand. We're in, we were in that process, well into it. We were well into having the money from the state revolving fund. I mean, we've gone quite a far distance down this particular road.
I asked a question because if, you know, permits lapse and those type of things, if that would have any impact.
We, the permits were, the request for permits was submitted. I don't believe they had physically yet come out. If they do come out, it doesn't matter, we're going to, I mean, we're not going to use, obviously, use them. And yes, indeed, permits likely will be lapsed by the time we consider this project.
Any other questions for Annie? Here is none. The next item on the agenda, petitions received referred to, suppose there are none of those, now we're to miscellaneous business. We have resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, a resolution to appoint and commission Joseph Messneri as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Seabrook Island. Mr. Messneri's appointment is in consequence of his service with the town's beach patrol. I now call for a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one? Hearing virtual silence, I will now call for approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. All in favor of approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one? Please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that was unanimous. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one is approved. And the last item I have on the agenda is citizens' comments. Now, Joe, as I understood what you were saying about our hybrid meeting today, it would be possible for people to indicate that they have some desire to comment during this meeting.
And we do have a couple citizens on the Zoom meeting. I'm not sure if any of them have any comments they wish to make.
Well, let me read this.
You're welcome to read that.
Okay. Anyone participating in the video conference and wishing to comment concerning today's proceedings may do so by, check me on this, clicking the raise hand button under the participants tab. Anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning today's proceedings may do so by pressing star nine to raise their hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand once. Every effort will be made to call on all speakers in the order they have raised their hands. When called on to speak, please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you in the audio or anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself. If we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which provide their comments. Each speaker will be informed when there are thirty seconds remaining. Once a lot of time expires, the speaker's audio will again be muted. So, Joe, just in case anybody heard what I read, is anyone raising their hand?
We do not have any hands raised at this time.
Well, at this point, I will gather that anyone who's participating in the video conference or in the telephone conference call has been scrambling trying to raise or and wants to comment, has been scrambling to try to raise their hand.
Oh, it's my hand. How's that? I'm serious. So, Annie Smith-Jones, two one one two, Bob Lawrie Lang.
Yes, Annie.
Seabrook Island, I'm a citizen of this town.
Yes.
I just want to support Barry's comments in regard to the fishing. There was an incident, it didn't happen this year, but last year, when I was on the beach with my dog, a fisherman hooked my dog with their line, their hook.
Were they casting?
No, I don't, no, I don't think so. I think we just happened, you know, he was sitting back just kind of what Barry described and wasn't paying a whole lot of attention. And, you know, we couldn't have seen exactly, we were in the water, I was in the water with my dog. And all I know is the dog got hooked by the hook. So.
Sometimes they put their lines out, the lines go out pretty far.
Oh, yeah.
And the current takes the line, the line could be fifty feet or a hundred feet past where they're sitting and they don't realize it.
That's right.
And then kids and dogs are running out there and the next thing you know, somebody's tapping them.
Well, they hooked my dog. So I've really got to support Barry's suggestion of changing the ordinance to move the, you know, and I was, I was so upset, let me tell you. And I asked the gentleman to move and he gave me a hard time. He absolutely gave me a hard time. And, you know, someone could be seriously hurt with this situation. And, you know, the town would be liable. I hate to say it, but the town would be liable or I suppose, whatever, I don't know. But I think as you've done with dogs, giving them a set time, set area, I think you ought to seriously consider doing that with the fishermen and move them out of the general public. I would request that you, if you're going to make them north of Boardwalk One, I would suggest you not open it after the season when you let the dogs, you know, sort of end. Because you're not letting the dogs going in a different area. You're just saying the hours are different. I think when you move the fishermen, if you do decide to move the fishermen, that you would be best off keeping that the same location, same hours, et cetera, and not saying you can now have it all over the place.
I was just going to need your time.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, Annie, in the meantime, that's why I really support, because of safety, of beach patrolling, really assertive when there's walkers, when there's swimmers, when there's dogs out there, they should be going up to the fishermen and saying, now is about the time to be fishing here, you need to. So that's where I'm coming from. I want to see them be real assertive and take, be proactive and not wait for somebody to complain. It's like, they should look at the beach and say, it's not safe at this point in time. You shouldn't be fishing.
Yeah.
And our ordinance reads that way. But like I said, I'm really trying to do a lot of research, like and present to council some changes to ordinance. So this is very helpful. I hope it changes personally, because I think it's dangerous.
All right, thank you, Annie. Joe, did you get any more raised hands?
No more hands.
No more raised hands. I think we've allowed enough time for people to raise their hands. With that, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting for the month of July of twenty twenty-one.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finkie. Is there a second?
Second.
Very well, it has been moved and seconded to adjourn the town council meeting for July of twenty twenty-one. All in favor of adjourning, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.